The board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the robe.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Middlebrook, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderman Coulter, Alderman Gunther, Alderman Valmer, Alderwoman Martin, Alderman Honowitz, Alderwoman Murphy, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Green, Alderman Oldenburg, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderwoman Spencer, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Coan, Alderman Williamson, Alderwoman Boyd, Alderwoman Navarro, President Reed.
Here.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Martin, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Williamson. Twenty present.
A quorum being present, unless everyone in the chambers and galleries is able to stand, then please rise for prayer. Given all honor to God, Almighty God, source of all authority, we humbly ask guidance in our deliberations and wisdom in our conclusions. Amen. We're going to suspend with our regular order of business to take up our courtesy resolution calendar. Alderwoman from the nineteenth, you recognize for the motion on our courtesy resolution calendar.
Mr. President, members of the board, I ask for adoption of our courtesy resolution calendar.
Move by Alderwoman from the nineteenth, second by Alderwoman from the thirteenth, Alderwoman from the nineteenth, and Alderman from the third, would you please approach the dais. I'm going to ask the Stanfield family if you can also join us up here. Tiffany.
We honor Jameka Stanfield. Whereas we pause today in our deliberations to remember Jameka Stanfield, a devoted mother, daughter, and sister with a warm, sensitive, and generous heart. And whereas Jameka was an avid professional, she worked as a customer service supervisor for over ten years and received the All-Star Award in both 2012 and 15. This award recognizes an employee who exhibits a positive work attitude, has a high work ethic, and embodies the Askulab culture. Did I pronounce that the right way? Okay, just wanted to make sure. Whereas Jameka was serious about family bonding and always made time for others, she enjoyed traveling, reading, shopping, and watching sports. But it was celebrating lives, special moments with family and friends that meant the most to her. April 12, 2016, at age thirty-nine, Jameka was struck and killed by a vehicle traveling between eighty and ninety miles per hour while she was crossing the street at a crosswalk going to her car. The driver left the scene. Whereas her family and friends were devastated by this tragedy and the loss of their beloved Jameka, her sister Tiffany went to work almost immediately to establish Fighting Hard: Fighting Against Hit-and-Run Drivers, a 501(c)(3) organization established to raise awareness, educate, and provide resources for families impacted by hit-and-run fatalities. Now for, there be resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the City of St. Louis that we pause in our deliberation to remember Jameka Stanfield, to encourage and thank her sister Tiffany for her efforts to support other families and raise awareness about hit-and-run fatalities throughout St. Louis. We further direct the clerk of this board to spread a copy of this resolution across the minutes of these proceedings and to prepare a commemorative copy to the end that may be presented to the family of our honorary at a time and place deemed appropriate by the sponsor. We introduce this on the eighth day of December, 2017. We thank the President, Jameka Stanfield, his family. Would you like to speak?
Thank you. I just wanted to take a few moments to speak. That particular part of our community has been a challenge. It is unfortunate that you can be very innocent in your approach at a moment, and it changes so many lives. What we want to do is we want to make sure that you understand that we do care, that we are paying attention, and we know that the hardship that is brought to this family is something that's going to be withstanding for a long time. When I look at the little one back there, I know how long that means. So, we give you our respect today, and we also share in your long-term, because it's going to be long-term grieving process, but know that the City of St. Louis's Board of Aldermen is here to support you in many different ways. And the first way that we're going to support you, this young Alderman right here, you all don't understand how good he is. That particular neighborhood used to be in the nineteenth ward and is now in the third ward. He is on the street every day. We on the phone. We have been all up and down that area trying to make it different. But the first thing that we're going to do together, and a lot of people don't believe that it should be done, but it will be done, and we're going to put a stoplight there. That's going to be the beginning of slowing some things down. While people are stopped at that stoplight as well, they can start looking at some of those, I consider unsavory characters that are all around and doing all kinds of things. Okay? So, that's going to help too. But what we want you to know is that the document, the piece of paper, it means a lot, but we also have compassion in our hearts for you today. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Alderman from the twelfth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. First of all, my heartfelt condolences to you and your family. And, Mr. President, if it's deemed appropriate this time, I'd like to add my name to the resolution.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that, add Alderman to the twelfth, from the twelfth to the resolution. Alderwoman from the twenty-seventh.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nice to meet you again, and I'm honored to know you. And so, now the work needs to begin. I appreciate our alderperson, Brandon Bosley, because he is a super alderperson, and he cares drastically for his community. Sometimes his heart is heavy because he sees the things that needs to be done, and we know we have a lot of work ahead. But anything that we can do to help you, and like Alderwoman Davis said, our work is only beginning now to help with the fight that you have. And so, if you all would be so kind as to add my name to the resolution also.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that change, add Alderwoman from the twenty-seventh. Also, Alderwoman from the fifteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to ask that the resolution be passed in bank.
It's been moved by Alderwoman from the fifteenth, second by Alderwoman from the thirteenth, that we pass this resolution in bank. All in favor, signify by a sound aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Madam Clerk, please create another copy of the resolution in bank.
So noted.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? I'd like to, just to this, to the entire family, and first let me just say thank you to Tiffany. Since the loss of her sister, she has worked tirelessly to create this 501(c)(3). And you're going to hear from her in a moment about the importance of it and what it means to us as a city and what this is doing to us as a nation. And I appreciate the work that she's doing and the fact that Jameka will live on through the works of this new 501(c)(3). Her death will not be in vain because through the works of this 501(c)(3), we're going to see changes made so that lives will be saved. So, I indeed appreciate and thank you for that work. And to the mother and father, as a father of four, I know that this has been a very difficult time for you. And I know your hearts are heavy, and there's nothing that will fill the loss of your daughter. But I do want to make sure that we present you with this resolution, and also thanks to Alderman Bosley for bringing this forward on behalf of the Board of Aldermen. This resolution is a piece of paper, but it's the highest honor the board has to give any organization or individual. So, one hundred, two hundred years from now, when you research the records of the cities of St. Louis, you will see amongst those records Jameka Stanfield. I know that we paused on this day to recognize her life and legacy and what she gave back to her community. So, I want to thank you on behalf of the Board of Aldermen of the City of St. Louis. And let's congratulate them and give them a big round of applause and some love. Tiffany?
James Cameron, James Tilford, Jerrel Roseman Nixon, Janelle Nelly Rice, Brandon Jennings, DeAndre Wallace, Justin Johansson, and Kiana Boyd, amongst many individuals, age ranging from five years of age to eighty-six years of age, were all victims of hard hit-and-run drivers. Hit-and-run fatalities are increasing at an alarming rate. One of those fatalities was my sister Jameka Stanfield. I come before you as someone who felt helpless and lost in the shuffle in seeking guidance on how to deal with such tragedy. Our organization was established to raise awareness, to educate, and promote the resources to families that have been impacted by hit-and-run fatalities. We seek to raise awareness. We seek to change hit-and-run laws. We seek to provide continuous resources to families that are left that have been impacted, and we also seek to grow revenue of that very mission. Families of hit-and-run drivers impacted potential long-term physical and emotional effects that can have significant financial implications. We will assist families impacting by providing support, resources to those very grieving families. This epidemic is not a local epidemic. This is a nationwide epidemic with an overall focus that will attract people from all backgrounds and all diverse ethnic areas. Hit-and-run crashes are increasing across the nation. Many states actually have passed these tougher laws, but Missouri is slow at pace in passing this very law. So, according to the CDC, just some quick numbers here, there were over ninety-nine-thousand and four hit-and-runs nationwide in 2016. That equates to one-quarter of all crashes, and only fifteen-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty-one results in charges. Now, how does that relates to us right here at home in St. Louis? The Federal Highway Administration named St. Louis City as a focus city for hit-and-run fatalities. Now, what that means is that over a three-year period, that is 2.3 fatalities for every one-hundred-thousand resident. And the AAA Foundation has stated that approximately six to ten fatally injured victims of hit-and-run were pedestrians. Fifty-eight percent of those fatalities occurred on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. And of that timeframe, those fatalities, forty-seven percent of those took place between nine PM and three AM. But here in the state of Missouri, of those particular statistics, the penalty is a felony D penalty, four years in prison, and a five-year fine. We must change this law. What is my ask? What is our ask of this organization? Is to drive home a message of these alarming statistics. We understand that there are equally competing priorities as it relates to crimes that are taking place in our city. We would love for this to be known as well. We want to educate and provide the advocacy of the victims, but more importantly, the advocacy of the families that are currently dealing with this epidemic. The effectiveness of this organization relies on you. The effectiveness of this organization relies on the community supporters, our aldermen, our constituents across the board. The effectiveness of this organization also relies on other organizations that are currently in place. For example, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Initiative that is taking place currently, they are in place to fight hit-and-run laws. You have the current Missouri Coalition Roadway to Public Safety currently has an initiative called Save More Lives. So, we're not here to replace what's happening. We're here to add to a solution. My ask is to recommend that in order to continue this success, we need you. We need that public and private support. We need that local and nationwide support. So, I thank the Most High for giving me the strength and the faith to stand before you. I'm thankful to the Honorable Louis Reed, President Louis Reed, and the entire board for allowing myself and my family to be here today. But more importantly, I'm here on behalf of my sister's son, Anthony Portia. We will honor the victims who were lost by these loved ones by honoring other victims other than my sister. We will have an event next year that we would love to reach out to some of these families. We will honor them. We will support them. We will raise our hands to them. In closing, my heart aches for my sister, but my heart breaks for my nephew, my mother, my father, and my brother. We got lost in the shuffle of this tragedy as others do to senseless crimes. That very shuffle is what causes the screaming and yelling inside of my body, and no one hears that angst, that silent screams that aches inside of my ears. There is a battle brewing inside of me. It's a fight. I am very strong. I am very independent, but when something happens like this, you become weak, and it is also unfamiliar. Losing and missing my sister will forever dwell deep in my soul. However, today, I push forward to uplift, to teach, to raise awareness on behalf of my family, but more importantly, other families who have not heard, who you have not heard their cry. Jameka Stanfield, as long as I have breath, I am walking with you and for you. We in this room and un-beyond, we are fighting hard for you.
Let's stand and give this family a big round of applause and thank them for it.
An amazing woman. She's super strong.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt our courtesy resolution calendar. All in favor, signify by a sound aye. Opposed? Motion carries. At that, we return our regular order of business. Introduction of honored guests, any introduction of honored guests. Alderwoman from the thirteenth.
As a board, I'd like to have as my honored guests this morning Samuel Adams, Keith Taylor, and Jeff Hans from the Carpenters District of St. Louis Vicinity in Kansas City. Thank you.
Any further introductions? Alderwoman from the fourteenth.
Good morning, Mr. President. I'd like to have as my honored guests Louis Hamilton from Centrix, Nathan Lett, VP EMS, Firefighters Local Seventy-three. And I'd also like to wish a happy birthday to the President of Firefighters Local Seventy-three, Demetrius Alfred, who is not here. He's out celebrating. And also, I'd like to introduce David Sweeney from Lewis &amp; Rice.
Happy birthday, Al, wherever you at. Alderwoman from the ninth.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I'd like to recognize Ann, Bob, and Annie up there in the balcony. Thank you for being here. And then, I would also like to introduce the President of the Screwed Arts Collaborative, as well as the Ninth Ward Democratic Committee Man, the Honorable Mr. Brian Walsh.
Alderwoman from the twenty-second.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to have my esteemed guests this morning, the infamous Leroy Grant and Chris Pickle with AT&amp;T, as well as Anthony Lancia with AGC, also known as Anthony Scalia.
Alderwoman from the twenty-first.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to have my special guest, Mr. Percy Green III, the Vice President of Fire, Mr. Shawn Sims, who's in the balcony. He's a Twenty-first Ward Business Owner and also Twenty-first Ward Ward Boss, Ms. Linda Primer.
Oh, yeah. Alderwoman from the sixth, and thanks for being patient.
Sure thing. Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to have as my guest today, my neighbor, constituent, and friend, Katie Cassis with Dentons.
Welcome, Kate. Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Alderwoman from the first.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to have as my honored guest, Ms. Lucinda Frazier, who's been a very long friend of mine, and is the wife of the former Alderman Bosley of the third ward.
Yeah. Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Alderman from the eighteenth.
Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to introduce my special guest today, Mr. Richard Ellis to my left, who's a longtime Eighteenth Ward resident.
Oh, welcome, Mr. Ellis. Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Alderwoman from the tenth, like to wrap us up.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the board, we're gathered here on December eighth. As we travel back in time, in 1980, John Lennon was shot on this day. In 1963, the first instant replay was ever used in a football game, back when football games were only an hour and a half on TV. But more, in 1941, FDR gave his Day of Infamy speech, but the most spectacular thing that happened on this day was in 1872, when Brigham Young married his fifty-fifth wife. So, there was no need for instant replay. Thank you.
I don't know if that was true, but fifty. Alderwoman from the eighteen, you recognize on approval at the minutes.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move that the minutes of the October thirteenth, twentieth, November ninth, and seventeenth, and December first minutes be approved.
Move by Alderwoman from the eighteenth, second by Alderwoman from the twenty-fifth. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by a sound aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in Sections A, B, and C of the agenda and have been placed in all aldermen's mailboxes.
With Dispense with Line Item Seven, would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? We will dispense with line items eight through ten. First reading of board bills.
Board Bill 207, sponsored by Alderwoman Navarro, and ordinance approving the dissolution of the East Loop Parkview Gardens Special Business District and the discharge of the members of its Board of Commissioners by repealing ordinance 63634. Board Bill 208, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, and ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commissioner, Comptroller, the Board of Estment and Apportionment, making certain findings with respect to the transfer of up to thirteen million, seven-hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand, seven-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars of excess money that the city intends to transfer from the Debt Service Stabilization Fund to the Airport Revenue Fund in accordance with Section 5.16.2B of the Lambert-St. Louis International Airport Adventure of Trust between the city as grantor and UMB Bank, N.A. as trustee, containing a severability clause and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 209, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller to enter into a second amendment to the Fuel System Lease and Use Agreement, AL442, to the St. Louis Lambert International Airport Fuel System Lease and Use Agreement, AL422, between the city and STL Fuel Company, LLC, dated December the twenty-second, 2011, containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill 210, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, and ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the Director of Airports of the city, owner and operator of St. Louis Lambert International Airport, to execute the consent to assignment whereby the city consents to the assignment by A.B.M. Parking Services Incorporated to A.B.M. Aviation Incorporated. All right, title and interest in the operating agreement for management and operation of parking facilities services, AL267, at Lambert-St. Louis International Airport, and containing a severability and an emergency clause. That's the extent of our first readings.
All right. Reference to committee.
To the Ways and Means Committee, Board Bill 207, and to the Transportation and Commerce Committee, Board Bills 208, 209, and 210. That's the extent of reference to committees.
We also have with us the school kids from Ames. Let's give them a big round of applause. I think we're gonna... Okay. We just want to thank them for attending today's meeting, and I look forward to talking with you in a few minutes. If you guys have time to stick around, the meeting shouldn't last very long.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in Sections A, B, and C of the agenda and have been placed in all aldermen's mailboxes.
With dispense with lying items seven, would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? We will dispense with lying items eight through ten, first reading of board bills.
Board Bill Two-O-seven, sponsored by Alderman Navarro, and ordinance approving the dissolution of the East Loop Parkview Gardens Special Business District and the discharge of the members of its Board of Commissioners by repealing ordinance six-three-six-three-four. Board Bill Two-O-eight, sponsored by Alderman Davis, and ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commissioner and Comptroller, the Board of Estment and Apportement making certain findings with respect to the transfer of up to thirteen million, seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars of excess money that the city intends to transfer from the Debt Service Stabilization Fund to the Airport Revenue Fund in accordance with Section five, one, six, point B of the Lambert-St. Louis International Airport Endenture of Trust between the city as grantor and UMB Bank, N.A. as trustee, containing a severability clause and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Two-O-nine, sponsored by Alderman Davis, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportement, authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller to enter into a second amendment to the Fuel System Lease and Use Agreement, AL four-four-two, to the St. Louis Lambert International Airport Fuel System Lease and Use Agreement, AL four-two-two, between the city and STL Fuel Company, LLC, dated December the twenty-second, two thousand and eleven, containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill Two-Ten, sponsored by Alderman Davis, and ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estment and Apportement, authorizing and directing the Director of Airports of the city, owner and operator of St. Louis Lambert International Airport, to execute the consent to assignment whereby the city consents to the assignment by AMB- ABM Parking Services Incorporated to ABM Aviation Incorporated, all right title and interest in the operating agreement for management and operation of parking facilities services, AL two-six-seven, at Lambert-St. Louis International Airport, and containing a severability and an emergency clause. That's the extent of our first readings.
All right. Reference to committee.
To the Ways and Means Committee, Board Bill Two-O-seven, and to the Transportation and Commerce Committee, Board Bills Two-O-eight, Two-O-nine, and Two-O-ten, that's the extent of reference to committees.
We also have with us the school kids from Ames. Let's give them a big round of applause, I think we're gonna... Okay. We just want to thank them for attending today's meeting, and look forward to talking with you in a few minutes. If you guys have time to stick around, the meeting shouldn't last very long, and we can go over some of the business that we do here, but welcome here to the Board of Aldermen. Let's give them one more big round of applause. And if you all have a moment, swing over and say hi to them while they're here during the course of this meeting, just swing over and say hi. All the one from the thirteenth.
As a board, I would like to also introduce as my honored guest Mike Dolphin, he's the Thirteenth Ward Committee Man and a dear friend. He snuck in on it.
Welcome, Mike. We'll dispense with lying items thirteen and fourteen, perfection consent.
Board Bill One-Nine-Five, sponsored by Alderman Cotar, and ordinance approving redevelopment plan for twenty-oh-one through twenty-oh-three, and Board Bill Two-Ninety-Six, sponsored by Alderman Con... I'm sorry, One-Ninety-Six, sponsored by Alderman Conway and Cotar, and ordinance approving redevelopment plan for Forty-One Twenty-One Russell. Board Bill One-Ninety-Seven, committee substitute, sponsored by Alderman Martin, and ordinance approving redevelopment plan for seventy-five-hundred through seventy-five-eighteen South Broadway. Board Bill One-Nine-Eight, sponsored by Alderman Volmer, and ordinance approving redevelopment plan for fifty-two-thirty-one, fifty-two-thirty-three, and fifty-two-thirty-nine through fifty-two-forty-one Shaw. Board Bill One-Nine-Nine, sponsored by Alderman Gunther, and ordinance approving redevelopment plan for forty-six-oh-one South Broadway. Board Bill One-Ninety, sponsored by Alderman Boyd, and ordinance pertaining to the administration and use of the Parking Meter Fund and repealing subsection B-two of Section Two of Ordinance Seven-oh-six-one-one. Board Bill Two-O-two, as amended, sponsored by Alderman Bosley, and ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of Streets Supremarily, close barricade or otherwise, impede the flow of traffic on Sullivan Avenue by blocking said traffic flow from Grand, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Twenty-Five, sponsored by Alderman Ingracia, and ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission to change the zoning of property as indicated on the district map from J Industrial to the F Neighborhood Commercial District for properties on Magnolia, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Two-Twenty-Six, sponsored by Alderman Ingracia, and ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission to change the zoning of property as indicated on the district map in City Block Twenty-seventy-six for properties on Magnolia from J Industrial District to the C Multiple Family Dwelling District, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill One-oh-five, sponsored by Alderman Ingracia, and ordinance to change the zoning of property in multiple city blocks on Locust Street from J Industrial District to the H Area Commercial District, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill One-Forty-one, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission to change the zoning of property from J Industrial District and G Local Commercial and Office District to the G Local and Off... Local Commercial and Office District only for multiple city blocks on Shoto, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill One-Thirty-eight, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and ordinance authorizing and directing the Mayor and the Comptroller to execute and deliver the Fifth Supplemental Trust Endenture, authorizing and directing the taking of other actions and approval and execution of other documents as necessary or desirable to carry out and comply with the intent hereof superseding provisions of prior ordinances of the city to the extent inconsistent with the terms hereof, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Two-Hundred, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and ordinance dissolving the Special Allocation Fund for the Edison Brothers Warehouse and Center for Emerging Technologies Redevelopment Project, terminating the designation of those portions of the city as a redevelopment area, and authorizing certain actions relating thereto. Board Bill Two-O-One, committee substitute, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and ordinance determining that tax increment financing plans listed in Exhibit A are making satisfactory progress under the proposed time schedule for the completion of the projects therein, whereas the tax increment financing plans and subjects listed in Exhibit A were approved by the Board of Aldermen of the City of St. Louis by ordinance. That's the extent of perfection consent.
Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on the motion for the perfection consent calendar. All the one from the first has requested Board Bill One-Ninety, One-Thirty-eight, and Two-O-One, committee substitute be moved to the regular perfection calendar. That's Board Bill One-Ninety, One-Thirty-eight, and Two-O-One, committee substitute.
So noted.
Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on the motion for the perfection consent calendar, minus Board Bill One-Ninety, One-Thirty-eight, and Two-O-One, committee substitute.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for adoption of the perfection consent calendar.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the eighteenth, entertain a second on that motion. Seconded by the Alderman from the twelfth, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Board bills for perfection.
Board Bill One-Ninety, sponsored by Alderman Boyd, and ordinance pertaining to the administration and use of the Parking Meter Fund and repealing subsection B-two of Section Two of Ordinance Seven-oh-six-one-one.
All the one from the twenty-second, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill One-Ninety.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of board, I move for perfection of Board Bill One-Ninety.
Been moved by Alderman from the twenty-second, seconded by all the one from the fourteenth. Alderman, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of board, Board Bill One-Ninety is almost like a cleanup bill to the ordinance that was passed based, well, the current ordinance based on the passage of Board Bill Ninety-two earlier. What we're attempting to do is to allow the Treasurer's Office of the Parking Meter Fund to capture operating expenses before they calculate the forty percent transfer to the City of St. Louis General Revenue Fund. The way it's currently written, and it's written based on state statute, it basically only allows, it allows the City of St. Louis to capture no more than forty percent of the net fund balance minus capital expenses and debt service. That allows the City of St. Louis, using the state statute language, period, that allows the City of St. Louis, for example, this current fiscal year, to move from getting one-point-six million dollars transferred to the General Revenue Fund to an additional four-point-two million dollars added to that, to the General Revenue Fund. Now, I would think our citizens, I would think all elected officials, will work in the interest of trying to get more money in the General Revenue Fund as possible to deliver the best quality services for our constituents. There was a lot of controversy about Board Bill Ninety-two, but at the end of the day, Board Bill Ninety-two, it passed this board. Just give me some context to Board Bill One-Ninety. It passed the board, it was approved by the City Council's Office, the mayor signed it, it is current law, as it is today. What Board Bill One-Ninety would do is replace Section Two with a new section, and what the new section is very clear with is all the expenses. It puts back in the opportunity for the Parking Commission Fund to use the operating expenses in the calculations, thereby reducing the amount of money that the city would get to the General Revenue Fund. I thought this was a goodwill gesture, I thought it was an opportunity to clear up any misunderstandings, because the current language appeared to be open-ended, there was a lot of issues that the Treasurer's Office had, the Treasurer herself had with it, and it's a step in the right direction out of all fairness and spirit of cooperation. But let me tell you what I did before I introduced Board Bill One-Ninety. I sent a copy of it to every member of the Parking Commission, and I believe the members of the Street Committee may have gotten it as well, but the key players are the members of the Parking Commission, because that is the fiduciary responsibility for the governance of the Parking Division. I asked in that email, if there's anyone who has any information that would be helpful to make in a good bill, a better bill, please let me know. I got no responses. Tuesday, we had a meeting, last week, or was it this week? Time is going so fast, but we had the hearing. The Treasurer was not there, members of her staff was there. Connie Johnson, who's the Deputy Treasurer, was there, the HR person was there, the Communication Director was there. I asked, is there anybody here from the Treasurer's Office of the Parking Commission want to speak on this bill, have any information to add? No one had anything to add. Silence seems to be acceptance oftentimes. So I said, okay, but in light of fact, the Treasurer did not show up, if there's an issue, let me know. So I had the conversation with Ms. Johnson, I said, hey, she said there's an issue, I said, we'll work on it, let's sit down and talk about it. It never happened. So Friday, the Treasurer was here, the Treasurer passed out the memo, objecting to Board Bill One-Ninety, never spoke to me at all about it, and that's okay, because at the end of the day, I'm the sponsor, and if I'm willing to work with you in some type of way, we don't have to agree, but if I'm willing to listen and sit down with you, maybe that should be taken in consideration. So, we're here today on perfecting the bill, but out of courtesy to some of my colleagues who have asked me to put this on a formal calendar, because they want some clarifications on certain texts in the bill, Mr. President, I'm gonna ask that it be put on a formal calendar.
Madam Clerk, please place Board Bill One-Ninety on the perfection informal calendar. All the woman, Alderman from the twelfth, would you withdraw your second? And Alderman from the, what'd you say, Alderman from the fourteenth? Alderman from the fourteenth, withdraw your second and fourth, okay. Madam Clerk, please place Board Bill One-Ninety on the perfection informal calendar.
So noted. Board Bill One-Thirty-eight, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and ordinance authorizing and directing the Mayor and the Comptroller to execute and deliver the Fifth Supplemental Trust Endenture, authorizing and directing the taking of other actions and approval and execution of other documents as necessary or desirable to carry out and comply with the intent hereof superseding provisions of prior ordinances of the city to the extent inconsistent with the terms hereof, and containing a severability clause.
Alderman from the seventeenth, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill One-Thirty-eight.
Yes, Mr. President, I move for perfection of Board Bill One-Thirty-eight.
Been moved by Alderman from the seventeenth, seconded by Alderman from the tenth, there's been a request for roll call, any further discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Alderman Moore. Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Ingracia.
Aye.
Alderman Cotar.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Volmer.
Aye.
Alderman Martin. Alderman Honowitz.
Aye.
Alderman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderman Howard.
Aye.
Alderman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg.
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey.
Aye.
Alderman Kennedy.
Aye.
Alderman Davis.
Aye.
Alderman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Vacaro. Alderman Ogilvy.
Aye.
Alderman Cone.
Aye.
Alderman Williamson.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Navarro.
Aye.
President Reed. Alderman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Alderman Moore. Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Green. Alderman Vacaro. Twenty-three, aye votes, one no vote.
By your vote, you stand the motion from the Alderman from the seventeenth, and perfected Board Bill Number One-Thirty-eight.
Board Bill Two-O-One, committee substitute, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and ordinance determining that the tax increment financing plans listed in Exhibit A are making satisfactory progress under the proposed time schedule for the completion of projects therein, whereas the tax increment financing plans and projects listed in Exhibit A were approved by the Board of Aldermen of the City of St. Louis by ordinance.
Alderman from the seventeenth, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill Number Two-O-One, committee substitute.
Yes, Mr. President, I move that we pass, perfect Board Bill Number Two-O-One.
Moved by Alderman from seventeen, seconded by Alderman from the tenth, has been a request for roll call, and has been a request for previous roll, did you have anything to add, Alderman? Alderman from the seventeenth, did you have any further discussion?
Yes, given that there was some hesitancy, the vote for the previous bill, which had no budget impact, no impact on our budget, or was granting additional dollars, and there seemed some hesitancy, I thought I would just take a moment to explain what Board Bill Two-O-One Committee Substitute is, so that there's clarification in everyone's mind. This has no budgetary impact, it is a, being done as a result of a state statute. Each year, TIFs that are five years old require that we pass a, an ordinance recognizing the progress of those TIFs, and that is all that is doing, it's a matter of state law and more of a reporting requirement than anything else.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Has been a request for previous roll, hearing no objection, motion carries. Board Bill Two-O-One Committee Substitute has been perfected.
That's the extent of board bills for perfection.
We will dispense with lying items seventeen through nineteen. First reading resolutions.
Resolution One-Seven-Six, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, the Board of Aldermen approves the Assessment and Equalization Maintenance Plan prepared by the Assessor as required by law.
Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on the first reading of Resolution One-Seven-Six.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board, I move that the resolution be sent to the Ways and Means Committee.
Been moved by Alderman from the eighteenth, entertain a second on the motion, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-fifth, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please sign Resolution One-Seven-Six to Ways and Means.
So noted. Resolution One-Seven-Eight, sponsored by Alderman Navarro, the Board of Aldermen approves the two thousand and eighteen Washington Place Special Business, Special Business District Budget.
Alderman from the eighteenth, you rec, I mean, twenty-eighth, excuse me, twenty-eighth, you recognize, first reading of Resolution One-Seven-Eight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I move that we consider Resolution Number One-Seven-Eight.
It's been moved, moved, would you like to send it, you moved to send it to a committee?
I would, I move that we adopt unanimously, Resolution One-Seven-Eight.
Through unanimous consent?
Through, yes, through unanimous consent.
Hearing no objection, please proceed, all the woman.
The, this resolution regards a budget that is required by law to be submitted by the Special Business District every year, and I have reviewed the budget.
All right, excellent. Now, would you like to make a motion to adopt it?
I move that we adopt Resolution One-Seven-Eight.
Been moved by Alderman from the twenty-eighth, seconded by Alderman from the thirteenth, that we adopt Resolution One-Seven-Eight through, via unanimous consent, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries.
Resolution One-Seven-Nine, sponsored by Alderman Ingracia, the Board of Aldermen approves the two thousand and eighteen local, Locust Central Business District Budget.
Alderman from the sixth, you recognize on the first reading of Resolution One-Seven-Nine.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move that we consider Resolution One-Seven-Nine.
All right, you, you want, you're requesting unanimous consent, or you want to send it to a committee?
I would love to request unanimous consent, I thought I had to put it up for consideration first.
No, I just request unanimous consent.
Okay, then I request unanimous consent.
Hearing no objection, please proceed.
All right, thank you, Mr. President, this is the annual twenty-eighteen budget for the Locust Central Business District, I've moved for adoption at this time.
It's been moved by Alderman from the sixth, entertain a second by Alderman from the twelfth, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries.
Resolution One-Eighty, sponsored by Alderman Navarro, the Board of Aldermen approves the two thousand and eighteen Central West End North Special Business District Budget.
Alderman from the twenty-eighth, you recognize on the first reading of Resolution One-Eighty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt Resolution One-Eighty by unanimous consent.
No.
Okay, I move that we consider Resolution...
No, 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 not that either. I, I, you just have to request unanimous consent, and if any, if no one objects to it, then we move forward, that gives you the right then to make the motion, so just request unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I request unanimous consent for Resolution Number One-Eighty.
Hearing no objection, please proceed, all the woman.
Thank you, the, the, Resolution One-Eighty regards the budget for the Special Business District that is... that is required by law to be submitted every year, and I've reviewed this budget. And so I now move to adopt Resolution 180 by unanimous consent.
All right, it's been moved by Alderman from the 28th, seconded by Alderman from the 13th. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 181, sponsored by Alderman Gunther, the Board of Aldermen approves the 2018 Cherokee Lemp Special Business District Budget.
Alderman from the 9th, you recognize on the first reading of Resolution Number 181.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'd like to request unanimous consent on Resolution 181.
Hearing no objection, please proceed, Alderman.
Yes, Resolution 181 is approving the 2018 Cherokee Lemp Special Business District's budget, so I would like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 181.
Moved by Alderman, it's been moved by Alderman from the 9th, entertain the second, seconded by Alderman from the 6th, and we adopt Resolution 181. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
That's the extent of first reading of resolutions.
We dispense with line item 22, miscellaneous unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
The only meeting that I have for next week is Friday, December the 15th, full board meeting, 10:00 a.m. in the chambers. That's the extent of my announcements.
Any further announcements? Alderman from the 3rd?
Thank you, Mr. President, how's everybody doing today?
Well.
All right, we can already get up out of here. We do have a Christmas party, as I said last week, it'll be this Saturday, 12:00. It'd be nice for anybody to come through, just for the kids to see, we giving our presents. We got community first here. We got a lot of people that's helped out and helped bring it to fruition, so once again, it'd be lovely to have anybody and everybody come out just to say hi. You know, we'll have Santa Claus there taking pictures with the kids. It's gonna be a nice dinner, so, you know, come on out to Herbert Hoover Boys and Girls Club at 12:00 Saturday.
All right, Alderman from the 22nd?
President, members of the Board, I'd like to announce the 22nd Ward is having its 14th Annual Holiday Party at the Omega Center on Monday, December the 11th, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. The doors open up at 5:30 p.m. Like I say, as many 22nd Ward residents come out as possible, it's all about them, opportunity for us to come together as a community, fellowship, have a good time, and stay in the holiday spirit.
All right, let's all give a round of applause to Lisa, congratulate her on her Alderman from the 14th?
Esteemed colleagues and members of the Board and public, I'd like to invite everybody to Das Bevo, to the Wonder Market, taking place on Saturday and Sunday afternoons. There's crafts, there's drinks, there's food. Come by and spend a little money and enjoy the atmosphere, the German Christmas atmosphere of Das Bevo. Also, Mackland is sponsoring a Christmas parade on Mackland Avenue on Saturday after 3:00. So we have lots going on on the South Side. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the 19th?
Mr. President, members of the Board, miscellaneous and unfinished business, I slept that. I do have some.
Oh, okay.
You do have some.
Okay, all right.
So our AME representative is here. We'd like for this Board to understand the program, and we'd like to have the opportunity, if the privileges allowed us, to have a couple of minutes.
All right, Alderman, even though it is out of order, but given the shortness of the agenda today, I do not believe any member of the Board of Aldermen will object and challenge it if indeed we invite you and the kids from Ames to the dais, considering the importance of it and the fact that these young kids have come down here to see what we're doing today.
Absolutely.
I really don't believe any member will object to it, so please approach the dais.
Along with Alderman Boyd.
And Alderman Boyd, please approach the dais with the kids from Ames. Let's all give them a round of applause as they approach the dais. Alderman from the 19th, Alderman from the 19th to 27th, please.
I'm talking on the mic. Why not? I give all these people the best of my heart.
Alderman from the 3rd, would you like to approach the dais? I'm being told that it's in your.
I'm gonna be extremely brief. The only reason I'm standing here is because, as a former president of the public school system here, I'm very excited and have been very involved with this program. And so I always acknowledge those things that work well, and I wish that we had more opportunities to educate us on the things that are going on in our communities that support our constituency. And so I will ask that Alderman Bosley will come forward and recognize, oh, my high school in your ward.
This is AMI Kids, they are located right on Natural Bridge and Grant, well, sort of, you go right up Natural Bridge. Anybody familiar with the old Boma High School? Yes, this is AMI Kids. We appreciate the kids coming out to come and see exactly what we do out here. This is where we make laws. If you all kind of don't have an idea, I'm sure they already educated you on why you're here today. So there is a lot going on in our communities, as you know. What we want to start doing is being a lot more involved with the children. That's something that I'm trying to do. I've been working at Clay School, working at a lot of other schools, so I definitely will be making my rounds to AMI School, so I can get more familiar with the programs that they have to offer and things that we can do as a Board and as a people to start helping everybody out, to kind of move our children forward. So, appreciate you all coming today.
You know, we take direction well, we're the new Alder people from our senior Alder person. But at this time, I wanted to introduce Ms. Antoinette Cousins, who is the executive director of AMI Kids, and her kids that are here. We had, they had a program the other night, and it was phenomenal. And I don't know if you all know, but one of her groups of children has written a book, and they are selling the book. And so they made a big success with that. So we need to recognize our youth, because you always hear the negative, but you never hear the positive that our youth are doing in our community. So at this time, I want to introduce Ms. Antoinette Cousins.
Good morning. I'll definitely be brief. What AMI Kids is, is Associate Marine Institute, and what we do is provide an alternative education program for students. Our mission is a second chance program dedicated to help students get back on track. So the students you see behind me are actually students that were kicked out of school. And once a child is kicked out of school, they're mostly thrown to the side and saying their problems is nothing we can do with them. But I'm telling you, the kids behind me are beyond something to be done with. The students that you see that were able to come today and want to know more about government, because these are the students that want to actually help make a change with what's going on within the City of St. Louis. All the students you see stand behind me take a test called the STAR testing. And what STAR testing does is gauge your growth in reading and math. And every student behind me has grown at least 60% in reading and math, and these are high school students. So these aren't your troubled kids that they try to say that they are. These are students that are ready to make a change, and without your assistance, they won't be able to. So trust me, they have questions for you.
Do we have a student that's willing to speak? Here he is, right here. Hello, my name is Nicholas Williams. I'm in 10th grade at the AMI Kids program, and I have one question for all of you guys. And it is, what was your biggest inspiration, or what inspired you to become an Alderman and help this city, you know, do certain things? Alderman from the 14th is standing there smiling at you.
Hello. Hello. I came and visited the AMI school, and I enjoyed my visit. And I guess what inspires me is the ability to further the education and the awareness of youth. As a lifelong educator and having spent 32 years in the education industry at St. Louis Public Schools, I appreciate what Ms. Cousins and her, Dr. Cousins and her staff does to redirect you children back into the mainstream and get you back on track and help you to shore up your educational resumes and get you back on track and recognize where your strengths are and where you can find your niche in life, whether it's in politics, education, industry, whatever. But you need to understand, the education is primary to your goals in life, and being able to read and write and compute are the things you're gonna need, no matter what you do, wherever you go. And I commend the AMI program for taking up the cause of youth that may have been left out of the system. And I wish you the best on your future endeavors.
Thank you.
And do your best and be the best you can, whatever it is. Good luck and have a good New Year.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the 1st?
Mr. President, members of the Board, first of all, I want to say how opposed I am to the whole concept of putting children out of school. I think that is a ridiculous concept. Our whole point is to educate children. So if you have problems, you move them to different situations, to intense counseling, but to actually get rid of their education, you're defeating the entire purpose of what we're trying to do, is to educate our youth. We had in my ward, Tri-A, for many years, right at the corner of Coke Brilliant and Kings Highway Memorial Boulevard, and in the rush to close all the schools in my community, they closed four, and that was one of them. We were always very sad about that, because I thought that that was an excellent example of what you do if you're having problems with a certain student in a classroom, is to put them someplace where they can get intense counseling and intense teaching, but you do not put them out of school. Many places that I know, in other cities and in other states, if you get in trouble, you don't get less school, you get more school, okay? More education, that's how you do it, okay? You don't have less. So I want to just say thank you to Ms. Cousins for the program. It's something, I don't even know what became of Tri-A, I think they moved it and put it with something else, but it's very important. And I'm hoping that with all your work, when you talk about putting children out of school, that the end result is they're back in school. And I'm hoping that we, when we get our Board back under our own control, that we elect Board members that are opposed to putting any child out of school. As an attorney, I worked at Juvenile, and I had the misfortune of children who got in trouble for the first time and it was something serious, they didn't have anything to do, they didn't have any place to put them, so they certified them and put them with adults. We are failing our children, so I want to thank you for what you do. I want to say to that young man, you are so verbal. So the other thing I want you to know is that just because you don't win the first time or something happens, the thing that this school is teaching you is how to get back up and try again and again and again. If anybody knows anything about Sharon Tyus, I do not give up, okay? That's what inspires me. I will come at you again and again, and at the end, I'll win, okay? So that's what you can do, too. The only thing that happens when something doesn't work out exactly the way it was planned is you get back and you get a plan, and then you come back at it again. And your end result is to have an education, and so that you can be a productive person in society. And thank you, Ms. Cousins, you've done a wonderful job.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the 26th?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I would just like to let the kids know, you've got an excellent principal in Mrs. Cousins. She's firm, she's stern, she's gonna crack the whip, and she's gonna show you tough love, but in the long run, it's to your advantage, because she's passionate and she cares about you. So pay attention, deal with her leadership, because she won't steer you in the wrong direction. So I just want to appreciate Ms. Cousins, I really think you're gonna do an excellent job, and the kids are very fortunate to have you as their principal. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? I just want to just congratulate all the kids, the administrators and all, everybody involved, for a job well done. The young man asked what inspired us to run for office, and I know everybody has a little bit different story. My story is that when I looked around my household, growing up in poverty, and looking at how other families lived and how my family and my neighborhood was always cut out of the equation, where we did not see the same city services coming to our neighborhoods that were going to other neighborhoods. That began to inspire me to try to do something different. Looking at the fact that my mother worked the same amount of hours as her male counterpart, but got half the pay, and how that impacted our family. And looking at how unions work, and wanting to see more inclusion across all of those things, those are the things that drove me to getting involved in public service. It's a great profession. It gives you an opportunity to give back and do something for others. And if you look around your house and your family and think about your life, there's things that you can work on and work to give back as an adult, so please consider some time in public service and work to try to make lives better for others. So I thank you for all that you've done thus far. Let's give them a big round of applause and congratulations. And by the way, my first call that I got as an Alderman of the 6th Ward, and when I woke up the next morning, was from Ms. Cousins. What you gonna do on my block? Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Nice meeting you. Where are you gonna come take a tour of AMI Kids?
Oh, yeah. I would love to. She's gonna set it up. Hold on, come here.
Alderman from the 15th?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I wanted to ask for a moment of silence. St. Louis yesterday, or on Wednesday, lost, who a lot of us refer to as, and I'm gonna get emotional here, the gentle giant, Norm White, who has testified in front of our Board several times, who has been a fierce advocate for criminal justice reform and who has done an amazing amount of work in St. Louis Public Schools to keep kids in school and out of jail. Very, very suddenly passed away at the age of 64. And I know that he has meant a lot to a number of people at this Board, and so I just wanted to ask for a moment of silence in his honor.
All right, thank you, Alderman. I had no idea that he passed away. I'll ask everyone in the chambers and the galleries, who's able to stand, to please rise for a moment of silence for Mr. Norm White. Alderman from the 1st?
President, members of the Board, I want to kind of extend a thank you to Terrence. While we were out, Sister Ebo passed, and the President was very busy with some things, personal issues, and Mary asked about getting a resolution done, and I ended up doing a resolution for the sister. But I want to tell you about when you have employees that really go above and beyond. Where is Terrence? Terrence, where are you? Stop hiding, come out here. I want people to see you.
He's working.
Terrence came to my house on a Sunday, he came down here on a Saturday, he made sure that I had a frame to put it in. I just want to thank him for that. That's above and beyond the call of duty. He's not coming out here on the floor. You come out here so we can thank you, Terrence, because that's what a good employee is like. And we almost lost him. He won't come out, okay? But we almost lost him, but we did for a little bit, and he came back. And I just think that I want to thank you very much, Terrence. I appreciate you.
Thank you. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Mr. President, members of the Board, I move that the Alderman from the 4th, 5th, 11th, and 23rd be excused for necessary absence.
Moved by Alderman from the 18th, and seconded by Alderman from the 26th. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alderman from the 19th? Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move that the board adjourns until Friday, December 15th, 10:00 a.m.
Moved by Alderman from the 18th, seconded by Alderman from the 9th, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, stand adjourned.